Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Can you hear me, Sharita?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Keys.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Aldridge.
Present.
Thirteen present, we have Quorum.
A Quorum being present, I would like to make a quick public health announcement first, given the amount of COVID that has been circulating through the board. We did send an email strongly encouraging folks to be wearing masks today, so I would suggest you wear a mask if at all possible. But given that, Quorum being present, we will be led in opening prayer and reflection by Reverend Daikaku Rumei with Confluent Zen Center. If you could please come up.
Good morning. For this morning's prayer, I'd like to read a short Buddhist scripture called the Metta Sutta. Let us pray. This is what should be accomplished by the one who is wise, who seeks the good, and has obtained peace. Let one be strenuous, upright, and sincere, without pride, easily contented, and joyous. Let one not be submerged by the things of the world. Let one not take upon oneself the burden of riches. Let one's senses be controlled. Let one be wise but not puffed up. Let one not desire great possessions, even for one's family. Let one do nothing that is mean or that the wise would reprove. May all beings be happy. May they be joyous and live in safety. All living beings, whether weak or strong, in high or middle or low realms of existence, small or great, visible or invisible, near or far, born or to be born, may all beings be happy. Let no one deceive another, nor despise any being in any state. Let none by anger or hatred wish harm to another. Even as a mother, at the risk of her life, watches over and protects her only child, so with a boundless mind should one cherish all living things, suffusing love over the entire world, above, below, and all around, without limit. So let one cultivate an infinite goodwill toward the whole world. Standing or walking, sitting or lying down, during all one's waking hours, let one practice the way with gratitude. Not holding to fixed views, endowed with insight, one who achieves the way will be freed from the duality of birth and death. Amen.
Any announcements, any, oh, sorry, introduction of honored guests. I'm getting to the end of the meeting already.
Like, we just skipped the whole meeting.
Right. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the tenth.
I'm sure you can tell how excited I am about my introduction to honor guests this morning. I would like to say, happy heavenly birthday to our beloved hubby. This morning, I would like to say happy 75th birthday to my forever first lady, my Auntie Sister C. And then I would like to have as my special guest, one of our former colleagues, Maurice Falls, affectionately known as Snoopy and the crew over at Foxy 106.9, as they kicked off The Real Breakfast Club, The Real Breakfast Club this morning. Shout out to Sunita, Doctor, I'm sorry, DJ Rose, the funny Lady Ree. And then, of course, I want to send some extra love, support, and prayers to Tammy Hollins. This get well soon, we're all praying for you. We love you, and we can't wait to hear you in the mornings as well.
Any further introduction of honored guests, any further introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, November 17, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, November 17, 2023.
It has been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we approve the minutes from Friday, November 17, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C, and the agenda has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the senior citizen service fund board, the appointment of Mary Willard Jones, who resides in the 11th ward. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely, Tashara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderwoman from the 11th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the senior citizen service fund board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Can I please request that this be sent to the appropriate committee?
Yes, would you like to send it to the Health and Human Development Committee?
Please.
Right. Madam Clerk, if you could please make note of that.
So noted.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 164 sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance number 64401 is codified in chapter 8.37 of the revised code of the City of St. Louis in order to extend the opportunity to register domestic partnership and domestic partnership registry of the City of St. Louis to employees of the City of St. Louis who do not live within the city as well as city residents. Board Bill 160-
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
It's been notified that we have some bills to introduce floor. If we could pause for a minute.
So noted.
So Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for purposes of introducing board bills 170, 171, and 172.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for Board Bill 170, 171, 172.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing board bills 170, 171, and 172. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman- Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderman Browning. Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 14th. If you could please place Board Bills number 170, 171, 172 at the end of the first reading calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 165 sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394 to calm the floor traffic on the 3800 block of St. Ferdinand Avenue. Board Bill 166 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement appropriating the Department of Health an additional $769,668 in epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection expansion grant funds from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services authorizing DOH to accept and expand such funds to fulfill the obligations of said grant to the extent such funds are received, authorizing contracts and other documents to extend such funds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 167 sponsored by Alderman Browning and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance pertaining to the planning commission approving and amending community unit for an area in the City of St. Louis comprising a portion of the Washington University Medical pledging corporations of the Board of Aldermen and requesting various officials, departments, boards, and agencies of the city to cooperate and to exercise their power in a manner consistent with the amended community unit plan, authorized and directing the taking of other actions and approval execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent here of and the amended community unit plan. Board Bill 168 sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic at various locations in the 7th ward. Board Bill 169 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps on the 5300 block of Claxton Avenue, 5900 block of Sherry Avenue, 5500 block of Era Avenue, 5900 block of Emma Avenue, 5400 block of Beacon Avenue pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394.
Madam Clerk, if you could please send 170 and 171 to Transportation and Commerce and 172 to Public Infrastructure and Utilities.
I'm sorry, President Green, I'm looking for the bills that I just had. Board Bill 170 sponsored by Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and the American River Transportation LLC for certain mowing rights in the Mississippi River under certain conditions for a period of 10 years at a rate of $74,945 for the first year and increasing by 3% each year after with three mutual options to extend for five years as set forth in the lease agreement attached heretofore as exhibit A and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 171 sponsored by Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and the Archer Daniels Midland Company for 42,722 square footage of real property at the near riverfront for the purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining railroad tracks under certain terms and conditions for a period of 10 years with three mutual options to extend for five years as set forth in the lease agreement attached heretofore as exhibit A and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 172 sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the 5800 block of Minnesota Avenue. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Thank you. If you could please send 170 to Transportation and Commerce, 171 to Transportation and Commerce, and 172 to Public Infrastructure and Utilities. Reference to committee of board bills.
To the Health and Human Development Committee, Board Bill 164 and 166. To Public Infrastructure, Board Bill 165, 168, 169, and 172. To HUDs, Board Bill 167. And to Transportation and Commerce, Board Bill 170 and 171. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of HUDs with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 155 sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the receipt of community project funding appropriating the sum of $5 million containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of budget and public employees. Board Bill 83 committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, President Green, Alderman Aldridge, and Alderwoman Sanyay. An ordinance establishing requirements pertaining to the retention of employees performing janitorial, building, maintenance, and security services under contracts for such services with the City of St. Louis or city agency, providing for certain exemptions setting forth consequences of violation establishing requirements in the event of city or city agencies outsources janitorial, building, maintenance, and security services being performed by the employees of the city or city agency, establishing policies in the event of the city or city agencies determined to have employees perform janitorial, building, maintenance, and security services and contain a severability clause and an effective date clause. Board Bill 160 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationship between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service, including the compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leave of absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan allocating certain other employees toward grade with rate amended section 2C and section 2D of ordinance 71686, including an emergency clause, and the provision of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. The following board bill was reported out of public safety with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 135 sponsored by Alderman Orion, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing St. Louis Treasury's Office to accept the city's address and fines and fees equitably program grant up to initial amount of $10,000 plus a subsequent anticipated award for $35,000 for the project implementation containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 15. Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 130 committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance approving redevelopment plan dated June 3, 2022 for the Locust Street, North Sixth Street, Pine Street, North Seventh Street area. Board Bill 137 sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance approving redevelopment plan dated August 23, 2023 for the 4132 South Compton Avenue area. Board Bill 138 sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance approving redevelopment plan dated July 26, 2023 for the 3041 Locust Boulevard area. Board Bill 145 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps at seven locations on the 5000 block of Beacon Avenue pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 7134. Board Bill 159 sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on various blocks in 1st ward. That's the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the- Are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 141 as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, President Green, and the following other persons: Keys, Browning, Clark, I'm sorry, Clark Hubbard, Sanyay, Boyd, Aldridge, and Orion. An ordinance pertaining to the creation and administration of a property tax credit for eligible senior taxpayers residing in the City of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill number 141 as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 141 as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderwoman from the tenth, that we perfect Board Bill number 141 as amended. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for hearing this bill today. What Board Bill 141 as amended does is that it creates and allows the City of St. Louis to create and administer a property tax credit for senior citizens with the purpose of freezing the city's portion of the property taxes at a constant level beginning in 2024. The city is able to do this because the state passed and the governor signed Senate Bill 190 which authorizes municipalities to create these credits. This credit is very important in order to help provide our senior citizens, many of whom are in fixed incomes, an ability to more easily age in place in their home. This is a valuable tool to help seniors keep the city's portion of their property tax stable for them. And how does this, how does this work? So, starting in 2024, eligible senior citizens would be able to apply for the credit through the St. Louis City Assessors Office for the credit. They would need to apply by June 30 of each year. There are conditions that the seniors would have to meet in order to qualify. They would need to be 62 or older, be the owner of a homestead, a home, homestead valued at $500,000 or less, have a legal or equitable interest in that property, use the property as a primary residence, and are liable for taxes on that property. This does not affect properties that are currently under tax abatement or tax increment financing, and properties that fall under that would not be eligible for the duration of those tax benefits. What's important about this, as I've mentioned already, is that this bill, this credit affects the city's portion of a senior's property tax on their homestead, and it does not, it does hold harmless the other taxing districts that are largely paid for through our real estate property taxes, like the schools, and VTM districts, special business districts, CIDS, those sorts of things. In terms of revenue reduction to the city, I know a lot of folks are concerned about that. The fiscal note that we've attached to the bill is, hopefully, answers a lot of questions, and it is very thorough, and I appreciate the mayor's office for doing so much to make that work, and of course, our wonderful Ryan Coleman from the Board of Aldermen for doing so much work on that. And so, that is, shows that the city would take at most a revenue reduction of about $500,000, if that's if every single eligible senior were to apply, and it is something that they have to apply for every year. Other governments across the state of Missouri are implementing this legislation. We've seen similar but different legislation in St. Charles County, Jackson County, St. Louis County, all over the state. So, this is the version that we have worked on in St. Louis, and I do really appreciate all of the cosponsors, I think many of whom were not listed on this agenda today, but are many. So, thank you everyone who's signed on to support, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. If the Alderwoman from the first would yield.
Would the Alderwoman from the first yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
First of all, I'm going to be voting. I'm going to abstain or vote present since this would directly affect my household, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to vote on this. But I do have a question. The first one is, I ran the bill, pretty good bill, addressed a lot of things, but it kind of dropped off, and there's no section seven. You didn't want a severability clause? Was there a reason why we didn't have a severability clause?
Thank you for your questions. Yes, thank you. The bill, the goal of it is to protect those taxing districts, and I think that if there are a few things in the bill that make it what I think to be a good, and I appreciate your comments on the bill, thoughtful bill, including the cap of the valuation of a property as determined by the assessment.
I'm not, there's no criticism. I'm just saying, usually we have a severability clause, and there's not one there, and I was wondering if there was a reason I would suggest that we put one there, because it kind of just drops off, and I kept looking for the rest of it, and it's like, I've never seen one that didn't have an emergency clause or a severability clause or something. So, it's no criticism, I'm just suggesting that maybe we could have a friendly ad would be to put a severability clause. You don't have to, and that's why I was asking if there was a reason that we didn't have one.
I would like the bill to go into effect as written, and if we need to work on it or do something different, that we'd come back and do a different bill.
Okay, so if one thing is wrong with the bill, then you want it to be everything's wrong with the bill, because that's what a severability clause does.
I understand, and I think the concerns are if for some reason things were stricken in order to make the school districts be harmed, for example, or the cap to go away. They're really important things to the bill that I think make it work for the City of St. Louis, so I would like the bill to stand as is.
Oh, that's fine, because I have argued that for 30 years, that when we give Tiffin tax abatement, why don't we give our own taxes away? That it's very damaging to be giving away other people's money, other entities, like the school board, like the other taxing districts. So I think this is excellent that that's in there. You also didn't want an emergency clause. That was also my other question. Was that not something that you wanted to have?
I think we have a good timeline established with the bill being able to be signed before 2024 in order to go into effect when the bill states it will be able to go into effect.
All right, but those were my questions about the, okay, then I want to go to page five, section seven, which is line seven about primary residence.
Section, I'm sorry, section, oh, yes, okay, I see it.
Page five.
Number seven, yep.
Right. So the primary residence, so, and I know you can't cover all instances, but what happens if you have people who are married, but they have separated, but they haven't got a divorce, and they each have gone into a separate residence that's their primary residence? In that case, with each, is it your thoughts that each of them will be able to apply, since if they have a legal separation, each of them will be able to apply for the homestead since they no longer live together?
As long as they are applying for the homestead in which they are, is their primary residence. So if I lived in, if I qualified for this and lived in a house and my husband or, you know, child or whoever is no longer, you know, with my homestead, lives in another place, and both qualify and own the homes, live in the homes, they would qualify. But what you can do to that kind of other side of that is if you owned two or three different homes, it would just, is that your next question?
Oh, no, 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 that's not my, I understood. I just, I understand that, and it shouldn't be. I have several properties, so I shouldn't be able to apply for anything except for my main property. So that wasn't my question, but it was just that if people, now people split up, but they don't necessarily get a divorce, but they may live in separate homes and own separate homes, and would they both apply? Because I have to go out to my community and explain this.
I understand, thank you.
The next thing that I have is page eight, section four, and it goes on to page nine, and that's a good amount that we had determined about the limit of $500,000. The only thing I have some concern about that is that in places where people maybe had low assessments, and I actually, I go to the edge of what I call the Central West Den Delmar now, and so some people that started out with very low assessments are now getting high assessments and high tax bills, and so their property might now get to be something that's above $500,000, but they may be there, have been there for a long time. And this is one of the very things that whenever you're trying to work in certain parts of North St. Louis, that people are so worried about is gentrification, that they will be moved out of their houses because they won't be able to pay the taxes. Did we consider, and this doesn't have to be now, but would we ever consider maybe an amendment to that that would say if you've been in a place historically that has been undervalued, and now it's got a rising, or your property values are going really high up, which I got a lot of calls from people who live on Delmar right along there, because their taxes went way up. Would we consider historically that these people have lived in a neighborhood that maybe is now being what they call gentrified, maybe addressing a addendum to that to- now being what they call gentrified, maybe addressing a addendum to that to address them not being priced out of their homes? Had you discussed that at all?
I really appreciate that question, and that's why this bill does specify the $500,000 cap, and it is important to note that this is regarding the total appraised value as determined by the most recent city assessment. Oftentimes, the houses that are selling are selling for much more than their, at least now, than their appraised value by the city assessor, and the cap is the $500,000. But to your point, as time goes on and things change, this $500,000 cap is adjusted with inflation. In the bill, we have that noted, so that it will increase if inflation increases, and it doesn't go down if inflation, if that makes sense. So, I think those are important things to consider, and, you know, the majority of the homes that our seniors are living in in St. Louis do qualify under this 500,000 value. It is the majority of the homes that our seniors are living in, and it is that because the goal was to make it accessible to folks exactly as you're speaking of, you know, just because the values around them are going up and they're on fixed incomes, it doesn't mean that their incomes are going up, obviously. So, trying to make sure that that took that exact concern into account. So, that is the exact intention of the bill here.
And also, the anticipation would be that they could then, if they somehow have to all of a sudden saying, well, no, it's more, and we didn't go up enough with inflation value, they could also go and appeal to the taxing board.
That's correct.
Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I like that you don't give the benefit of you getting tax abatement or TIF until that's done. I think that's a great thing. I had one other question. Oh, again, I want to say it's great with that St. Louis Public Schools, Community Colleges, Library, Zoo, and all of those people are not harmed by us giving this tax credit, because for years, we have done that in very wealthy neighborhoods in the city of St. Louis, and we have created our wealth in certain parts of the city on the basis of other people doing without. So, I think this is a great thing to take that out. And I think, no, that was all. That was my last question, and as I said, I will be voting present, because this affects me personally. So, I do not want to, it would be a conflict of interest for me to vote on this, since I am slightly over 29.
Thank you.
Alderwoman?
I have no further questions.
Alderwoman from the 13th?
Madam President, would the alderwoman from the first take a question, please, or a comment, not a question, it's a comment?
Would the alderwoman from the first yield to questioning from the alderwoman from the 13th?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say, at first, I was going to abstain, but then, when she stated in there, it's the choice, you don't have to apply. So, I wouldn't apply for that because I am an alderperson, so I don't think that would be fair or justified to the residents that's out here that actually need that. I support the bill 100% because it's passed due. We should have been and had that bill out there. So, I applaud her for bringing that bill forward. But then, when she said you have to apply, I was like, okay, that kind of takes me out of it, because I'm not going to apply for it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the ninth?
I just want to offer my support for this bill. Agree with the comments so far that I think this is responsible implementation, and I want to thank the alderwoman from the first for her work on this, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our residents and implementing a bill that came out of the Missouri Legislature that wasn't the best and making it really be the best for our city. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th? I think you're muted.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm going to say, even though I'm not going to apply now, the reason why I'm not going to vote for it is because I could apply in the future. And so, this is something that is making something available to me, and I think it is. The alderman from, used to be the 25th, but I can't remember if he's fourth now, I guess, or the third, always talks about that he is the only person that listens to the conflicts of interest. But to me, even though I don't apply, I can apply, and it is a benefit to me and my husband. And so, that's why I'm not doing that, because I don't support what is being done, but that I have the potential for it to be a benefit for me, if not this year, the next year, or the year after, or whenever I decide, and I still can. So, I would caution people that if you're over 29, that you might think about that.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate my colleague from the 12th pointing out the conflict of interest here with Prop R. I was having a discussion, actually, with our colleague from the 4th Ward about this and how Prop R is actually so vague that this is actually one of those bills that none of us should be voting on if we were strictly adhering to Proposition R, because it basically says that we may have a personal or fiduciary or pecuniary benefit from any legislation that's passed here, and certainly any of us that may eventually reach the age of 62 would potentially be eligible for this type of tax credit. So, if we own a home, so if you're, you know, a homeowner and may reach the age of 62 or be over the age of 62 currently, you certainly may participate in this benefit, which is both a personal and a pecuniary benefit. So, you know, if we are actually following Proposition R, then anyone who is a current property owner, and certainly anyone who's over the age of 62, should be recusing themselves from this. The other interesting part of Prop R is that when these bills are introduced is when we are supposed to be filing a conflict of interest form with the clerk's office. So, I am not aware of anyone who has filed a potential conflict of interest form with the clerk's office with respect to Board Bill 141. So, again, you know, not to belabor the point, but Prop R has some very serious flaws with respect to the administration of the legislative process, and, you know, you all can certainly vote your conscience here in what you believe to be in the best interest of our constituents, but Prop R specifically does spell these things out, and it's very broad, it's very general, and frankly, anyone who is a property owner here that potentially might reach the age of 62 or is currently over should not be voting for this underneath Prop R.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 11th?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Alderman Cohn, thank you for that clarification, as well as the alderwoman of the 12th and the alderwoman of the 13th. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, I won't be that age, but my husband will, which would then include me. I am a cosponsor and supporter of this bill. I'm happy to see that this is going forth, and unfortunately, I'll have to vote present, because he will be at that age, and we do own, like the alderwoman of the 12th, several pieces of property, and so I will have to recuse myself from this process.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, I do want to make sure I'm listed as a cosponsor. I'm not seeing me on the agenda. Alderman from the 3rd?
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to be added as a cosponsor. I may be wearing a shawl and maybe on crutches today, but I have not yet reached the age of 62, so I would appreciate being added as a cosponsor. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 10th?
Thank you so much. Let me get myself together. He's so, he's been joking the whole time while people have been talking, but I just want to encourage and offer my continued support for this legislation. I know the work that went into this, and I know the work that's gone into this in the community, right, for our constituents, which you pointed out, Alderman Cohn, about us voting for our constituents. I'm going to be a proud eye today, and I know the people that are watching are looking forward to this going into effect as soon as possible as well. Again, as was pointed out earlier, it should have been gone into effect, and it should have been an incentive for us on behalf of our seniors here in the city of St. Louis. So, thank you to all the colleagues that are in support today, and I look forward to voting aye.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just wanted to make sure that I publicly thank Alderwoman Schweitzer and the mayor's office for their leadership of this. I know how long she's been working on this bill. We've had some conversations about it for quite some time ago, and then also, I would echo some of what Alderwoman Tyus lifted. I definitely think it's worth us looking into, you know, other policies and other things that we can do to help the ways that other groups of people may be at risk of gentrification or displacement from their community. Thank you.
Alderman from the 14th?
I just felt like I had to hop on this love train that's happening right now, and also thank the alderwoman from the 1st Ward for working on this legislation. And as somebody who is only 16 years old, I'm so excited to be able to vote for this legislation. Thank you, Alderwoman.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first, you're recognized close.
Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate so much, again, everyone who has cosponsored this bill. We've spoken with many, many seniors who are eagerly awaiting the passage of this bill in order to help them to be more able to pay their bills. The tax credit is, you know, it's a modest amount, but for a senior on a fixed income, a modest amount can make a huge difference. I think we all know that from talking with our constituents. So, I really appreciate everyone who's spoken in support of this bill. I appreciate all the questions. I want to publicly thank Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Norryan, Alderman Browning, and Alderman Clark Hubbard, who took time out of their day to either show up in support and committee or meet with me during the formation of this bill to really get their input and their thoughts on it. They had invaluable comments, so I just want to say thank you for that. Just as a point of clarification for those who may be questioning their Prop R involvement in this bill, if you plan on not voting yes on this bill because you think Prop R affects you, I would encourage you to please abstain instead of voting present. I like to call a present vote a soft no, because that's what it ends up counting as. So, I appreciate all of your time, and I look forward to perfecting this bill today. And with that, I renew my motion. Thank you.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the first, second, and by the alderwoman from the 10th that we perfect Board Bill Number 141 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer? Alderman Aldenberg? Alderman Cohn? Alderman Norryan? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Velasquez? Alderwoman Sanjay? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys?
Abstain.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Abstain.
Alderman Aldridge? President Green?
Aye.
11 aye votes, three abstain, and one voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderwoman from the first and perfected Board Bill Number 141 as amended. Report of engrossment?
Board Bill 157 and Board Bill 153.
Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Board Bill 157 and Board Bill 153.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bill Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer? Alderman Aldenberg? Alderman Cohn? Alderman Norryan? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Velasquez? Alderwoman Sanjay? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge? President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Browning? 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of Board Bills.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 18B. Report of the finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bills 157 and Board Bill 153.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading of resolutions in reference to committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 20. Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Resolution 159, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanjay and President Green, priority challenges for the RAM settlement.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized on the second reading of Resolution 159. Oh, from the 7th, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would ask Madam Clerk to read the resolution.
Resolution 159, priority challenges for the RAM settlement. Whereas, a goal for the RAM settlement is to use the funds to help solve big challenges that impact the city residents. Whereas, in a citywide survey commissioned by the Board of Aldermen, residents were asked to share the challenges that affect them or people they cared about. This survey reached nearly 3,200 residents with representation from every ward of the city. And whereas, inadequate city services were the top priority challenges for residents, with car damages caused by poorly maintained street infrastructure and slow 911 responding to some of the most widespread challenges reported by surveyed participants. Whereas, 53% of the residents who share additional challenges report concerns with crime or public safety, describing experiences with car break-ins, reckless driving, and lack of police presence. And whereas, the city needs to increase its workforce to adequately enforce legislation and fulfill the needs of residents, and increase wages and benefits are a critical component of attracting more workers. And whereas, the city's sources of revenue need to be more resilient to economic downturns. And whereas, the city's water infrastructure is outdated and in need of upgrades. Whereas, the lack of access to affordable and quality childcare undermines children's futures and makes it difficult for cities' families to afford basic needs and contribute meaningfully to the economy. Whereas, pedestrians, bicyclists, drivers rely on sidewalks, roads, and public transit to commute in their lives daily, but many feel unsafe doing so due to dangerous roads, reckless driving, and poor infrastructure. Whereas, downtown St. Louis has suffered disproportionately from departure of the RAMs, as well as impact of COVID pandemic. Whereas, the Board of Aldermen must be fiscally responsible steward of the RAM settlement funds and responsive to the needs of the city's residents. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Aldermen adopts the following as priority challenges for the purpose of RAM settlement plan: attracting and retaining city workers, increasing public safety, improving city finances, upgrading water infrastructure, increasing, I'm sorry, access to affordable childcare, improving community mobility, catalyzing downtown reinvestment. We further direct the clerk of this board to create a formal copy of this resolution so it can be presented at a time and place to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced by- a time and place to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced by the Honorable Felicia Sanier, Alderwoman of the seventh ward, and the Honorable Megan Green, President of the board.
Thank you. So I think the resolution is pretty self-explanatory. I want to make sure that I thank all of my colleagues who have gotten a chance to meet, gotten a chance to talk, that have attended our Committee of the Whole meetings. I want to make sure I thank all the residents who are attending our Committee of the Whole meetings for all of their public feedback. So the goal of this resolution was just to combine and identify all of the key priorities that was lifted up by residents and by colleagues. And I definitely want to thank the president's office for helping to sort through all of that data and information on the portal and in the paper surveys. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th? What's it? Oh, did you not get a second?
I'll make a
Did you want to make a motion to adopt? Sorry.
Yes, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 159.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt Resolution Number 159. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Altenberg. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Okay.
Just trying to get in there.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. 13 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the seventh to adopt Resolution 159. Courtesy Resolutions. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 23. Announcement.
Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, the Committee of the Whole will have a webinar at 11:00 a.m. Monday, December 4th, Transportation and Commerce will have a committee hearing via webinar at 2:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, HUDs will have a committee hearing here in the Kennedy Room at 11:00 a.m. Wednesday, December the 6th, Public Infrastructure will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at 3:30 p.m. Thursday, December 7th, 2023, Health and Human Development will have a webinar at 9:00 a.m. Personnel will have a webinar at 11:00 a.m. And Friday, December the 8th, 2023, full board meeting here in the Kennedy Room at 10:00 a.m. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Aldermen from the fifth.
Yes, I'd like to publicly thank the Alderman from the 14th. Due to the unforeseen damage due to the bridge at 55 in Lothborough by the contractor, he's spending the weekend as the warning flag for traffic. He's donating his whole weekend to spend there so that you can notice that there's, no one gets hurt. Thank you very much, Alderman. You're a true public servant.
Thank you, Alderman, for that comedic relief. Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just want to make sure I give a reminder. I know people look forward to this. Print Bazaar is happening on Cherokee Street. There's a number of activities that you can do that are free of charge. It's an excellent community building, community-driven event on Cherokee Street tomorrow. Just want to make sure I uplift that. And then also, we do have a Committee of the Whole meeting tomorrow as well.
Further announcements? Alderwoman from the 13th.
Thank you, Madam President and board. I wanted to thank the Our Lady of Holy Cross for doing a Thanksgiving meal for the people less fortunate that were in the 13th ward on Thanksgiving Day, and Creative Touch and City Hope Bible Church with Keith Jefferson and Pastor Palmer, they had did a Thanksgiving meal, and they delivered over 50 hot meals to seniors that were bed bound to ensure that they got a Thanksgiving meal that did not have families. And so that's to show that we can't do things in our community without the help of people that volunteer. And so these people have stepped up to the plate continuously. And the Creative Touch and City Hope Bible Church, that was the 14th year that they have been doing that event. So thank you so much.
Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I would like to stand up and shout happy birthdays to a living legend. Some of our former colleagues, but some of us who have followed St. Louis politics just know all of the impact that the Bosley family has made on the city of St. Louis generationally. But the patriarch, rather, Mr. Freeman Bosley Sr. is celebrating his 90th birthday. Absolutely. So I think we should be shouting happy birthday to him and again, all the work that they continue to do. And I know that Bosley family is going to have a good time this weekend.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, I want to thank Alderwoman from the 13th Ward for speaking on different agencies that is meeting the needs of people in our community. And we can't do that without mentioning the great work that the Urban League under the leadership of Mike McMillan. I am so just elated that they are able to provide the level of resources and services to our community. And I am so very thankful that throughout our city, people of all ages who are suffering food scarcity have been able to utilize the services of the Urban League to bridge that gap. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you to the Urban League and then leader general, Michael McMillan. Thank you so much.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
We've got a couple of things happening in the sixth ward before the year ends. I'm having my final town Tuesday, December 5th. We have a giving theme, so we will have folks from Winter Outreach there who are, will be collecting hand warmers and men's hats, as well as Isaiah 58 Ministries, and they're requesting cake mix and cooking oil. So just following their request. We'll also have Adam Pearson from Department of Human Services, and that'll be from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Magic Chef Mansion. And then on December 14th, I am hosting a social hour. Well, it's really a social three hours at the Royal Mall. They'll be making coquito, which is a Puerto Rican eggnog. It's a tradition in our culture. So feel free to join us at any of those events.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you so much. I'm going to follow in the Alderwoman from the 10th's footsteps and issue a birthday greeting to my mom, who had a birthday this week, was the circuit clerk of the city of St. Louis for four years and has been a dedicated St. Louis city resident for entirety of her life. I love you, Mom. Happy birthday.
Aldermen from the third.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to just have residents of the first and third ward mark their calendar for a town hall in January for January 13th. I know we're coming up on the holidays. It gets very busy. People lose track of things. So I want to make sure that that's on the calendars. And then I would like to compliment my colleague from the 14th ward on his choice of suit and attire today. As someone who has tried wearing that color a few times in my past, it just washes me out altogether. So you wear it with a lot of pride and gusto, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Aldermen from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to let the residents of the 14th ward know about the annual 77th and 14th ward Christmas giveaway that will be happening. Myself and Representative Kim Collins is hosting a Christmas giveaway, which will be December 23rd. We're taking names and registration now for any family members who would like to receive either toys, food, we'll have raffles, toiletry resources, and so much more. To register for this, you need to email KimberlyAnne.Collins@house.mo.gov so that we can make sure we have a headcount when it comes to food and have a headcount when it comes to gifts. And I would love to not only thank the Alderman from the third for the compliment, as well as the Alderman from the fifth for the haterism. You got to keep the haters going to look this good. So I appreciate you all.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Hi, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also want to make sure that I uplifted my office hours for this month. That will be on December 18th at Rooster from 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and then evening at Sippy from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. And also tell residents of the seventh ward to mark your calendars for January 17th at 6 o'clock. That'll be our first town hall for the new year.
Any further announcements? Any further announcement? Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. All members were present this morning.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, December 8th, 2023, City Hall and the Kennedy Hall.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adjourn until Friday, December 8th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.